So we are on, welcome to the March 15, 2021, meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. As usual, before we get started, I'm going to read our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings in the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings and board meetings in the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by statute of commonwealth. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law awards the opportunity proceeding, but not necessarily. During meetings, the Select Board is entitled to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. So welcome to anyone joining us online, well, and I just want to thank John Novak because he's got us with a much better setup here. Technical wise, it's going to be a lot easier for us. These have not been particularly easy for us, so he's got us in good shape. And are we live on YouTube?
I think so.
We are actually live. Up to something new we'll be doing whenever possible. Any other announcements? Ed, any announcements?
I don't have any announcements. I have something for later under a little desk. I have no announcements. Thank you.
Anybody present for public forum? I don't think anyone online is here for public forum. If anyone is, just turn your mic off and jump in. You don't have anybody joining us yet. So I guess we go along to the approval of minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the board's selectmen minutes from March 1, 2021, March 2, 2021, and March 9, 2021.
Well, I'll second that, but I have a question on the March 1, 2021, the board has left in the board of health's meeting. I've not mentioned, I wasn't, I wasn't in for the whole meeting, so I just wanted to add that up to you.
Yes. To Ed's point, that was a meeting of the board of health. It was a remote meeting. It was a remote meeting. So, yeah. So we could just indicate this.
I'm sorry, Ed, I didn't catch that myself either.
That's fine. Well, I second the changes.
So a motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so in terms of posted business, our first item, as usual these days, is an update from our COVID coordinator. As everyone knows, we have a new COVID coordinator, Claudia Stardi. She is not available to join us tonight, but I do have a letter here from Claudia that says as of Monday, March 15, which is today, the town of Hatfield has had three new positive cases from March 8 to March 14. We are continuing to see a reduction of COVID cases in our community, and please continue to follow the CDC guidelines and adhere to the six-foot social distancing recommendations, and you must be wearing a mask. So nothing's changed in terms of how we're asking people to behave, but the good news is that the numbers are declining, so that's really good news. Anybody want to add anything to COVID?
No, I mean vaccinations are proceeding. It's getting better for people to get vaccinations in the state, and that's a positive thing. That's all I want to say.
Yep, and there is a plan for getting the schools back. It's a rollout that's going to take a little while, but at least we're moving in that direction, so that's good.
And I believe March 27 is the day for teachers if they want to get a COVID vaccination, according to the Massachusetts vaccination site.
Oh, I know teachers who are already getting vaccinated, yeah, which is great. I love seeing that. That's really terrific. Anything? You're good?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. So our next agenda item is Tree Works of Mass and their proposal to expand their license and authorization for a virtual community outreach meeting.
Right, so Tim Kaye.
Tim is joining us this evening. Tim, are you able to turn your camera on and your microphone? There you are.
Yeah.
Good to see you. Thank you for coming.
Good to see you guys as well.
So this is your agenda item. You're looking to, you want to explain what you're looking to do?
Sure, so we're required by the state governing body to host a community outreach meeting for any license applications that we're pursuing. It's kind of a three-stage process with the town where first we hold this outreach meeting, and then, or at least how we've done it, we did it for our manufacturer licenses, we got a special permit through the town after that, and then negotiate the host community agreement after that. So basically, the state has mandated or recommended virtual community outreach meetings. Since, I think, April of last year, they've had that as a recommendation, and they've just mandated a few different requirements for those meetings. So the town has recommended that I come speak to you guys today just to get authorization for hosting that meeting, and I believe when I spoke to, shoot, I think it was maybe to Marlene, she had mentioned the possibility of having the town moderator moderate the meeting because we are required to have a moderator. It's not supposed to be someone that is a representative of our business, but it can be a representative of the town, so I believe she had mentioned that she was going to reach out to the town moderator about that.
Okay. I mean, we have to grant permission for you to be able to do this online, is that correct? But we've already done that before with other, yeah, so I have no problem with that. I do, it does say expand license and the authorization. Is that all the same?
You're now authorizing the expansion.
Oh, okay.
So they're seeking to expand upon their license.
And this virtual meeting is part of it. Okay, yeah, I have no problem with this.
So this wording is incorrect, it's just for the outreach.
Right, we're not voting to expand a license. We're just voting for the outreach, authorizing it to be virtual, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's pretty straightforward. I have no problem with that. I'll make a motion that we allow, we authorize Tree Works of Mass to do a virtual community outreach meeting under the circumstances due to COVID.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go, Tim.
Great, and then the one question I would have is how would you like me to go about scheduling the meeting? Do you want me to just pick a date and let you guys know, or work with the moderator for a date that works with them?
Both, yeah.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would connect with the moderator first and then see what date might work for.
If he's interested in doing it.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, schedule it through.
Okay, great. And I was thinking, since there's potential for people in the town that want to attend it, maybe it would make sense to do it on the same platform, since some of them are already familiar with this platform for the town meetings?
Sure.
I would think that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I think at this point, most people are using a number of platforms, but.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that would be great. Appreciate it.
Do you guys have any more questions for me?
It looks like Ed has a question.
I just have one question. This has nothing to do with the outreach. I saw you got your sign up out there. I'm just curious, where are you in the process of doing whatever you're going to be doing?
So, yeah, we've received our final license from the state, so we're just about to start our first production batch, and we're looking to make sales from our product manufacturing facility the next month or so, or starting in about a month, and then we're kind of looking to hopefully use our income from the manufacturing license to kind of fuel this expansion to do a grow in delivery as well, so.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
Great, thanks, guys. Appreciate your time today.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Good night. Okay, next, appointments and resignations, annual appointments, which was something we tabled. That's right. You know, I had that email. I didn't print it out today, but I don't see, because isn't that what we're working off of, that email from Lydia? Yes, I don't have a copy of it, do you?
I do.
Is it?
Would you like it?
No, I mean, was it in? Oh, wait a second.
It was, I think Marlene had.
Well, she sent it out today. You talking about what she sent today?
Yeah, this is, I thought this was.
From today.
So what we have in the packets are the actual appointments.
Right.
See, I don't even have the appointments in here.
Oh.
They were attached to that, Diana, no?
No.
To your top one?
Oh, way back, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, they were placed together. They're separate. They're separate items, yeah.
Okay, okay, sorry. So, but then there was the information in the email about some specific appointments. Does that change anything that we would be voting on if we just went by this sheet? Because didn't it say it should be in conjunction with their contract, certain appointments? Right.
Can I?
Sure, Lydia.
Yeah, what you guys had all asked last meeting about this was why do we annually appoint all these people, like the inspectors, the fire chief, the police chief, and everything like that, when they're really town employees? And I'm like, well, we've been doing it since I've been here, so then I delved last week and did a lot of research and found that all of these are statutory. Under the statute, they're to be appointed by the selectmen. So that's, you know, why they're still appointed, and it looks like the fire chief and the police chief terms match their contract.
Right.
So.
Right, that's what I was just saying. So, but if we go, well, these are all, okay.
In the middle of the packet, there is Lydia or Marlene.
Red sheet.
We're kind enough to put a motion in there.
Lydia drafted that for the board.
And I think the language of it, Diana, might assist us, because it talks about those that aren't highlighted, right?
At the end of the letter that I sent you today, the email that I sent you today.
I didn't get an email.
Brian had brought up possibly changing the timeframe from July 1 to June 30 to coincide with the.
Fiscal year.
And then I did some research on that, and apparently back in the day, as far back as 2012 and earlier, it did run from July 1 to June 30.
Yeah.
So if that's your, what you want to do, is you want to change the timeframe for these annual appointments, then I would first extend all the appointments, and then we'll take up the appointing early June.
Yeah, okay, so that's what I was referring to, and I couldn't find what I needed today, or from earlier today. Yeah, that's fine. I think that's a pretty simple thing to do, and then it just makes it, takes care of your concern about doing them this time of year, and.
It just seems to flow a little better, given, you know, the way elections work in town and things like that.
And doing all of them right now in the middle of budget season seems like, you know, just after town meeting, it's a good time, I think, to do those, which would be the end of June thing.
The other thing I ask is that anytime you're renewing a contract for like the fire chief, or the police chief, or anybody else that's on this list, let me know so we can make sure we're coordinating that contract to the.
Yeah, so I need to do that. Yep.
We can do that, Lydia.
Three-year terms.
That's easy enough. Okay, so then tonight, we're not going to make the annual appointments. We're going to vote to extend all current employment, excuse me, appointments through June 30?
So the way I worded it was to make a motion to extend the terms of all appointed persons, boards, and committees to June 30 of their respective end-of-term years, and to make annual appointments during the month of June going forward. And the reason I wrote it like that was because if you just said to extend everybody that's there now to June 30, that only takes care of this year, then we'd have to re-vote that again next year.
Gotcha, okay.
I was hoping that wording would take care of it and just change the whole point of schedule.
Yep, so Brian already made that motion, okay.
I'll second that, then.
So a motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No, Lydia, thanks for doing the legwork on that.
Very much.
It just seems to make more sense going forward, so.
So we will hang on to these, because we'll be revisiting all the appointments in a couple months.
While we're on appointments, I just got one more thing. I understand that someone had pulled for you an old appointment when you appointed Jim Croll to the Open Space Committee, and the terms were off.
That's right, remember, you didn't vote the term because there was a question.
I don't know, Brian, exactly what you did. Did you?
They voted, Lydia, the board voted to appoint him to that committee, to Open Space Committee. They just left out the term because.
We weren't sure.
The form showed that it expired in 2021.
Right.
Right, so his term would actually be three years because had this, you know, been updated, then it would have said the three, the term would be three years. So I didn't know if you wanted to vote, you know, to just.
Well, we need to vote on the motion that we already have.
So we're going to first vote on the motion we just made. All those in favor?
Aye. So Lydia, do you need it to, do you need it to spell out that it's for three years?
I don't think so.
We appointed him to the vacancy, so if the vacancy only runs for three years, and that's.
And, and, and he's already been shorted.
Oh, he has, I was just going to say, so his, when he receives his appointment, we need to make sure that that reflects three years.
Yeah, we'll just have to remind him that.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
So we're good there.
I think we're good.
Okay, Lydia, thank you.
What about Scott?
You're welcome.
Well, that's a separate.
Oh, that part of this too?
Yeah, I was going to bring those up too.
We also need to specifically appoint Scott Pomeroy as the animal control officer.
So actually, these are two separate, one is the animal inspector, inspector of animals, the other is animal control officer.
Yep.
The state asks that the animal inspector be nominated for appointment effective April 1, 2021. That's the first one.
Okay, so we need to make that.
I'll nominate Scott Pomeroy to be the, what's his exact title?
Inspector of animals.
Inspector of animals, effective April 1, 2021.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No, ma'am.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we also have his appointment as the animal control officer.
Officer, correct, and that is, yes, the vote to designate.
Is this getting put, I'm sorry, Diana, so is that appointment now part of the other larger list of appointments as the animal inspector that we just talked about with Lydia? You know what I mean? As our animal.
This is, I think this is the state designation as the animal.
For both?
Well, he, it's.
Okay, that's, no, that's fine. I just didn't want to.
Oh, I'm so, well, the animal inspector said the form is due back by April 1. I apologize, that was my mistake, so it's not effective April 1. The town has to reply to the state by April 1.
Of who our nomination was.
Correct.
Okay. Scott currently holds that position, though.
Correct, and, yeah, and.
So this was just an extension of something that already exists, but because the state's requiring the paperwork, that's, so do I need, so are we, we can just say effective for three years on April 1, right? I mean.
I think these are one year.
Oh, one year?
I understand these are, this position is one year.
Marlene, that's the inspector of animals?
Says annually. It says that the board shall annually designate, so, yeah, it's every year.
Starting May 1, it says. May 1, 2021 through April 30, 2022.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, so I just saw valid through April 30.
All right, so I will withdraw my motion to have it effective April 1. We didn't vote on it yet, did we?
No.
Okay. I will make a motion to nominate Scott Pomeroy to be the inspector of animals effective May 1, 2021, and run through April 30, 2022.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I did sign this state form in here, and you know, while we're at it, we should.
We still have the other Scott one, right?
Yep, there's the other one, too.
I thought we did that one.
Animal control officer.
That was the first one we did. I thought we just voted that one.
Yeah, but the dates were.
Inspector, the inspector's the first one.
I just did the inspector. The other one is what I re.
Yeah, we don't have to sign it or anything.
Okay.
Right. That's just a nomination.
Didn't we take up the inspector and then the animal control officer?
I didn't realize you've done the second one yet. I thought you only did one.
The inspector of animals?
That's the one we just did, April 1, excuse me, May 1 through April 20.
Correct.
Okay. But the animal control officer is a separate one, right?
It is. It is separate.
Okay, I thought we did them both.
You did.
Yeah, we did.
And we voted, okay. Karen says we did, and we did.
Now, that does.
Thanks. You don't believe me.
No.
Diana does require.
No offense.
There is a form for you to sign.
Yeah, I signed it already.
Okay.
Okay, and so.
Getting confused about which position is which.
Once we get through the confusion, I do think it's a really good time to thank Scott for the work he does, because.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Honestly, he really does a terrific job. I mean, there's been several, you know, different times where we've had lost pets or found pets, and he's really just so good, and he cares for the animals so well, and you know, I think it's a job that a lot of people don't stop and think about very often. You don't hear about him very often, but he's there and he's doing his job, and he's doing a really good job, so.
I would agree.
Thank you, Scott, very much for that. Okay, that took a while.
Yeah, it did.
So our next topic is a mutual aid agreement between Hatfield and the town of Waitley. Is Bob joining us?
I don't see him on yet.
I mean, I know he's not here, but usually this is something I would expect him.
Yeah, and my understanding, he was going to.
I think I saw him, and he said he was coming in. Should we maybe put this aside?
Yes, that's right ahead.
In case he joins us?
Good idea.
Okay, so we'll skip over that for now. Maybe we should be in touch to see if he is coming on. I don't know if we can do that. Town hall renovation update, and this is regarding the condensate pump, pipe?
Pipe, yeah. So contractors, we were notified at the end of last week that the contractor would be on-site later Friday and first thing Monday morning, and they were here this morning, and very busy, lots of noise. I don't know whether the work has been completed today. I believe they.
It's not completed.
They wanted a couple, they needed a couple of days, but they didn't, I don't believe they came Friday. They had indicated they would.
It did turn out to be more than just fixing a pipe. They, the way it is, is your steam goes up to the radiators and it returns with condensate. They couldn't just fix the pipe, they had to put in a condensate pump, so they're piping in a pump that will pump the condensate back to the furnace, so that's, it turned out to be more than what we were under the impression.
And as a result of that, there's pipes in the restroom, the ladies restroom. We had to close that restroom. We couldn't let anybody use it, yeah.
They're going to fix that, by understanding.
Did the leaking cause any damage at all, or?
Pipes are going to have to be replaced, I would expect, but no damage, the floor, you know, is stained, but hopefully that can correct any positives.
Okay, I'm good with that. Bob did join us, so if we're done with this, are we done with that?
Get my text, Bob.
Just for information. Okay, great. Chief, thanks for coming on. We wanted to wait for you to be here to talk about this mutual aid agreement. Did you want to speak to this?
So we've had a handful of calls over a number of years in the section of 91 North and Southbound that are really difficult for us to get to heading northbound, or southbound, rather, and for Waitley to cover northbound. It's just the way that the ramps are on 91. So I had reached out to Chief Hanham from Waitley Fire, asked if he was, if it was something that he'd be interested in coming up with an agreement, and he said his comment was, I'm not sure why we didn't do this 20-plus years ago. So what I did is, what you have in front of you probably is essentially a carbon copy of the agreement that we have with Williamsburg about the jog and part of Old Sage, and the only change in the wording itself were literally the Williamsburg to Waitley, and then the physical locations, which obviously, since I wrote that agreement, you know, I think the exit ramps have changed so forth, but I think I tried to keep it as a mile marker. So we're just trying to make it better for both departments. It takes us a long time. We would have to go all the way to Deerfield to turn around to get to our section of 91 South, and Chief Hanham has to come essentially all the way to 21 and turn around and head north to get to the one little five, six tenths of a mile on either direction for us. So that was the reason behind the agreement.
So this just basically leads to easier, more efficient, and therefore quicker response to incidents on 91. You would still, you would maybe still respond, but you know that Waitley would get there sooner and vice versa, right?
So if it's just a standard, standard call, you know, whether it be a car accident or anything like that, just like we do now, you know, Williamsburg covers our calls on that side unless it turns into an actual fire, and then by statute, we have to go. In this case, they would cover the calls if they either needed more resources, or they felt that the call was long duration and they needed to be relieved from the call, then they would call for us. It would go to then our mutual aid instead of their run cards for certain items, and this is only for fire calls. It's really just a matter of it, you know, for us or for him, you know, it might take us 10 minutes to get enough people to the station coming from their homes, and then it's another 10 to 12 minutes to get out, turn around, and head south in a fire truck. So we're just trying to make it a little bit quicker to get emergency services out there on the fire side.
Right, okay, understood. Okay, and I see Waitley has already voted and accepted this, so.
Yes.
I have, I have no further questions about that.
Nor do I. Thanks, thanks for your explanation, Chief.
Yeah. Ed, any questions or concerns?
No, thank you for getting this agreement taken care of, that's all I'm going to say. It makes things a little bit easier for both sides.
Yep. I'll make a, sorry.
No, I was going to make the motion.
Go ahead, make the motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the agreement presented by Chief Flaherty regarding the cooperative efforts between Hatfield and Waitley.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, so we'll revisit the agenda, the CARES Act spending update. Brian?
Yes. Oh, thank you.
I had a conversation with a representative from the Massachusetts Office of Administration and Finance last week regarding the process, you know, of submitting eligible expenses. And I was assured that there will be coverage, whether it's through FEMA or through CARES. And according to the representative I spoke to, FEMA is a rolling grant program. And so for any of the expenses that we have submitted under the CARES or the money that was allocated to Hatfield, what hasn't been covered, we should be putting, submitting to FEMA. And so I will be pulling that information together and reviewing it with the fire chief. So we can... And I understand that this money, if you have money still available, you have until December of 2021, December 30th, 2021, to spend that money.
That's good.
I guess I would like to thank you for the update, but I'd also like to, as I've mentioned in the past, I'd like to thank you and Chief Flaherty for... And of course, everyone in our accounting side of the house, but you and Chief Flaherty for tracking the expenses, the COVID-related expenses and submitting them, whether it's through the CARES Act or FEMA or MEMA. I know it's... Can be a little complicated with who's really going to reimburse us for our expenses. But you guys have done a really great job, so I just wanted to publicly thank you both and everybody else who's had involvement with that as well.
I did share with the fire chief last week after I had talked to the state that... Because FEMA would have preferred that it would have closed last October. But what I was told is that that is a rolling funding application program.
Which is good because COVID's still here. I mean, it's, you know, it's not like it ended. So I'm glad they're willing to still reimburse the cities and towns for...
Yeah, and the suggestion way, way back, literally a year ago, to funnel all of that through one account probably was a great idea, given that this has gone on so long and it's been, you know, so much money by all different departments. But having it go through that one, and I don't remember if that was you or Bob or both of you together, but that was a great suggestion. So... Okay, is that all on that?
Yes.
Ooh, sorry. The FY 2022 capital planning.
So that, you know, we'll continue to keep that on the agenda. But just to quickly follow up to the last meeting, the board discussed having an assessment done of all our town facilities. And I reached out to the Capital Planning Committee. And I think David Keir is probably going to start the process. I had explained to him it didn't need to occur now. It's not a task that needs to be done. You know, let's wait until after the town election and annual town meeting. But in the meantime, he has asked for a copy of the feasibility study. And I understand Franz Bellacy is going to be resigning from capital planning, but he was interested in taking a look at the feasibility study.
David was?
Franz Bellacy. He still wanted to look at it.
So that didn't filter down to the Capital Planning Committee just yet? Like whatever, you know, I mean, I know about it, obviously, because we...
The email was sent to Franz Bellacy, his chair, and a copy went to David. It didn't go to the entire committee. But I would expect that David will be following up with the rest of the committee.
Okay. Okay, great. Town meeting warrant?
So you have a draft copy of the warrant in your packet. And again, this is just a draft.
You got to start somewhere.
Right. There will be... I am aware another article will be added. We had contemplated an article on the warrant last year regarding leasing that land on Billings Way. And I had a conversation today with town council and Joe LaValle, the cemetery commission. You know, just had some concerns last year over the article that had been... That was a draft. And then we later pulled that from the warrant last year. But it seems like there's, you know, an article that they're comfortable with. But of course, the board will have to review that article.
Joe still on the cemetery committee?
He is not, but he works with them, assists them.
Oh, that's fine. I just... I thought that he had resigned last year.
He did. He did.
So what about the other item that we had decided to table, which was the discussion of changing Board of Selectment to Select Board?
That is on here.
It is, okay.
Yeah, that's near the end of the...
Did the other... Did the preliminary work get completed? Remember, it had to go because it was changing the zoning bylaws and...
I don't know, but I don't... I have not talked to the Planning Board Chair. But, right, they have to have a hearing on it. And I would expect that they will be doing that because they are going to be having a hearing for another zoning matter, which Stephanie addressed last week.
Okay.
So, you know, the first four, five articles are... Four articles are standard. And, you know, I have articles on there that are placeholders in anticipation of shortfalls. Special education had indicated that there may be a shortfall there. But if the Finance Committee is able to take care of some of these shortfalls in the current fiscal year, then we wouldn't need the article.
So they're just kind of placeholders for now?
They're there as placeholders, yep.
Okay.
And I am aware of some prior year expenditures that we will have to vote on.
Which isn't unusual, the way... Right, so I mean, the prior year because of the way they... The, you know, bills that came in after June 30th.
That's correct.
Of last year.
The previous fiscal year.
I mean, that's not... Yeah, that's common.
It does happen.
I shouldn't say it's common, but it's not unusual when that happens, just given when bills are released by companies to us.
Yes.
Payments and things like that.
Right, yep. Community Preservation Commission has submitted one article. And that is to preserve and restore the historic town viral records. What we don't have on here are any capital articles that the Board of Selectment and Finance Commission decide.
Yeah, that's in process.
Thank you for putting the preliminary together.
So we'll continue to... As I add articles, any others to be added, I will bring those before the board.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay. And then last is just Route 5 water sewer. Is there actually an update or is that just on there?
That is just on there. If we had... I thought I would have an update as of last Friday, but I have not received any information from the engineer. So, you know, the DPW director and the engineer and I had a conversation last Thursday. The bids were received for the general contractor for Route 5 project. And we had discussed some options regarding Miss Berry's property. So the engineer had wanted to look into that, and I have not received a response back yet.
Okay. So that looks like it's it for the regular session. And we are going into an executive session, so...
Under Old Business, can I just bring up?
Oh, yes, sorry, I forgot about that.
Under Old Business, I just wanted to bring up, last week I was at a Legion meeting where under Paul Labby and Mike Pasha came in and gave a presentation on the parade and the parade route and everything that's happening. So I was just wondering if down the road before the parade, maybe those gentlemen can come back, come to town meeting, show a map, explain the different units and how everything's set up this year. So I thought that would be good for the town to see. That's all.
So I have a 350th meeting Thursday. We can talk about that because we're talking a lot about the parade. The parade will be a little bit different, but it's going to be great and going through a lot more of town. So you're right, it's going to be very different. There isn't that everybody should come to one location. We're specifically doing it this way so that people can stay spread out. People... So you're right, we should have a presentation on that.
Yeah, because it's like eight sections.
It's going to be almost like
Eight divisions.
A worm that keeps moving through town.
We want to make sure we get the word out because I was having a conversation with somebody last week and they didn't think there was going to be a parade at all. And I said it had been postponed to May of this year, and they didn't see it on the website. And I said it is on their calendar that's listed on the website.
And so we're still finalizing the details and everything because it is a significant change from how it would have been. But it's really going to be great. It really is. It's going to be great. And a lot of people are going to be able to watch it right from their houses.
The reason there's been some concern is there's a Smith Academy Facebook webpage for Smith Academy alumni, and I don't believe that's been updated because it still states that the parade was canceled, but this was from last year, so...
Who runs that?
And I think Bill Zisch was in charge of that page at that time. But I don't think he's doing it anymore. I'm not sure if they have anybody that's designated to update that page anymore.
Well, if you're looking for information on the Hatfield 350th, you should get it from the 350th page. Nobody else's page. So, yeah, but that's a great suggestion. So we'll see if we can get Paul and Michael and maybe Bobby Betzold in because it's going to be kind of neat how it's going to work, so... Okay, so we need to now go into an executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session and not return to public session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Number 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. In this case, it would be the Treasurer/Collector Employment Agreement.
And I'll second that.
Moreyardi, aye?
Durski, aye.
Zinal, aye.